Yeah, I moved it over there. This was...
Come on, yours is fun and...
And the PowerPoint was up there.
The time is now 7:08, and I would like to call the Beloit City Council meeting to order at this time. First order of business is a roll call.
Roll call shows all council members present except for Councillor Lupke.
Item two is pledge of allegiance. Will they all stand, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third item is special order of the day and announcements. There are none. Item four is public hearings. Item four A, please.
A resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow a limited vehicle service use in a C2 neighborhood commercial district for the property located at 2056 Liberty Avenue. The Plan Commission recommended denial, five to zero.
Mrs. Christensen, please.
Miguel Servin, the owner, the operator of Miguel's Tires and Rims, has applied for this conditional use at 2056 Liberty Avenue. The property currently has a retail space, a single-family residence, and an attached residential garage, and is located at the intersection of Liberty and Division. As staff reviewed it, we found that it did not meet the requirements for parking. They were proposing to park employees on the street. The ordinance requires you provide all your parking on your site. There was also some concern raised by engineering and housing services with the operation of the business. They were going to have people pull their cars in on Division, and then they were going to pull the cars around onto Liberty and into the garage, and there really wasn't adequate space to turn around or make any of those turn movements. We sent the public notice out to the neighborhood. We did receive a copy of a petition, which is included at the very back of this item. Those are the neighbors who are objecting to the conditional use. Plan Commission held a public hearing at their last meeting. No one did come, the applicant, or the concerned neighbors, but they did decide vote five-zero to recommend denial of the conditional use permit. Included in your packet is a resolution approving that conditional use. If council so desires to approve this conditional use at this location, the staff came up with seven conditions, which they felt would alleviate some negative impacts of this use, and they are that the conditional use permit authorizes limited vehicle service use within the existing building at 2056 Liberty Avenue, that the applicant shall establish off-street parking for all existing and proposed land uses located at 2056 Liberty, before the use is established, the main entrance driveway fronting Liberty shall be extended to the residential garage, widened to the specifications of the city engineer, and paved to allow vehicles to turn around on the site. Before the use may be established, four additional parking, additional off-street parking stalls must be established, before the conditional use may be established, off-street parking stalls must be striped, and that no new used or waste rims, tire, waste tires or rims shall be displayed or stored outside the building located at 2056 Liberty Avenue. And these are similar to what we really required the city tire, which is located on Madison Road, to do when they establish their conditional use for this type of use.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on item four A this evening, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak on item four A this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item four A this evening? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing at this time and entertain a motion from council. Go ahead. It has been motion and a second for denial. I'm...
It's phrasing positive.
If you support the resolution, then vote yes. If you oppose the resolution, vote no.
Right. Councillor Evander Bogart.
Yes, and Ms. Christensen, did I hear correctly that at the Plan Commission, no one appeared, not even the proponent of the change?
No one appeared. The applicant was not there, and nor were the residents who signed the petition, which is odd for us.
I would think, yes.
Any other questions?
No.
Councillor DeForest.
But by my count, it looks like fourteen residents did sign a petition saying they did not want this business at that location, correct?
Yeah, some of them are, you know, multiple residents of the same property, but, you know, there's one, two, three, four, five, there's at least seven properties listed on here. And there's not a lot of properties. These are the properties that are on the side of Liberty that this business is on, so these are primarily the residences that kind of surround this property.
Would that be all? Any other councillor comments or discussion? Hearing none, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor of...
Can I make a point, Mr. President?
You sure can.
So, a vote, a positive vote is for approval of the request, and a negative vote is for a denial of the request. Am I correct? Just, I think that's what it is, but yeah.
Correct. So, a yes vote, a yes vote is approval, and a no vote is for denial.
That's what I was...
Just want to make sure everyone understands before we go. Okay. Okay, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Nay. Thank you. Item five, citizens' participation. We have reached a point on the agenda where citizens may come forward and address anything that's not on the council, I mean, on the agenda. Councils will not act on your discussion this evening, however we will refer to the proper staff member. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the citizens' participation this evening? Seeing no one, I would close that portion of the agenda and move to item six, which is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. So, any councillor liking they removed from the consent agenda, councillor DeForest.
Mr. President, I'd like to request that item H be removed, please.
Item six H will be removed. Anyone else? So, the consent agenda consists of items six A through G and I and J. Is there a motion for approval of that portion of the consent agenda? Motion by Haynes, is there a second? Second by Spritezer. All those in favor of approving that portion of the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that portion passes. Item six H, please. Chief Jacobson. I mean, Beth Jacobson, I'm sorry.
Chief, wow. I got a promotion today.
I'm gonna keep under control, I'm gonna keep a lid on it.
That's exciting.
It's been a long day.
So, I, my, you can read my staff report. Essentially, the Rock County Humane Society has been our vendor for animal control for over ten years. It was even last year before I started at the city that they notified the city that they could no longer continue with animal control services with their existing facility. Over time, there's been a little bit of confusion on whether they wanted to be part of the solution or if they wanted us to outsource it, and currently, the Humane Society is interested in helping be part of the solution, but the main issue appears to be the need for a larger facility. There is some inconsistent policies in Rock County. Beloit and Janesville seem to be subsidizing much of the animal control in the county. Many of the smaller municipalities, townships, villages do not have consistent policies, mostly related to the fact that animal hoarding seems to be, you know, a sort of a thing that happens in many different communities, and there's no way to predict. And so, if you had a small budget, you could imagine that one case could bust the budget, if you will. And so, that's something that we deal with on a regular basis, but our budget, you know, has a little bit more flexibility in these smaller townships. So, they've extended the contract for one year, and we're hoping that in the next year, we can find a long-term solution to animal control countywide, is the goal. I can't, you know, really speak for the county.
Okay, thank you. And just for the record, item six H is a resolution approving 2012 contract between the city of Beloit and Rock County Humane Society Incorporated. Councillor DeForest, is there any additional questions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I am concerned about the increase in costs, which is tremendous, and I know we're, we're, in a sense, stuck because there's no other entity that's providing a service right now. And I also know that we've been talking with Janesville for about a year in terms of how to work out another solution. I'm just worried that we're going to be at this point again next year, and we're going to be paying fifty thousand more dollars, and we're going to be still saying, yes, we're looking for another solution. Could you talk a little bit more about...
Sure, that's a...
...wing on that, what the progress is?
That's a real concern. I know in the last year, what, what's occurred is that we've always sort of known that this is where they're going, but the solution isn't an easy one. There's not another vendor in the county that provides a service. Every county, specifically Walworth and Racine County, are having the same issue that we're experiencing now. Walworth County has a contract with their Humane Society, and they do a lot of external fundraising. You might have seen recently that they're going to be groundbreaking and building a new building. Racine County is having, is in the exact same position we're in, a little bit different is that their largest community is Racine, which is much larger than Beloit, and Racine is, has gone to all the, I think they have nineteen townships and other adjacent municipalities in the county, and they've all, they're not on board, and so Racine's going to take over animal control only. And by animal control, it means they only take in stray animals. The problem comes in is with this adoption. Essentially, you have seven days to hold a stray, and then it, and then it becomes adoptable, if you will. It's hard for agents, a government agency, to sort of get in that business, and so that's a real struggle. That's why, you know, working with the Humane Society would be the best benefit, because then they would, they have the contacts within their own agency to do adoption services, but they also have contacts with rescues and fosters and other types of agencies. We did a lot of educating ourselves in the last year. It's a, it's a large issue. It's not just stray animals. There's also issues such as, you know, we've had an issue in Beloit where someone couldn't take care of their animals, but it's not really necessarily a stray animal. And so, there's a lot of external issues. The other thing is livestock is included in that, so it's not just, you know, dogs, stray dogs and cats. It's a bigger issue, and so we've done a lot of research. You know, I've learned more about feral cats than, than I ever knew colonies, and how many years it takes when you spade and neuter. I mean, you really have to get a grasp of animal control. I mean, these stray cats, you know, can certainly breed. I mean, the Humane Society, we have what they call kitten month. It's March. That's when a lot of cats end up having kittens, and so, you know, the, the best idea would be to work with the Humane Society, but it is a very complex task to, to overcome. But I assure you that staff is working on a solution, and we're working with Janesville, and we're hoping to find a solution, and there's a veterinarian in Rock County that's also working with us.
Is there actually a committee that's formally meeting to work on it, then?
Yeah, you know, we're called a couple different things, but we kind of call it a task force, Animal Control Task Force, and at the point now is where we really need to just talk to the county and see if there's a way that there can be a countywide solution. And I think the largest challenge to that will be getting the townships on board, because it's just sort of not a priority, and hopefully I'm not misspeaking.
Do you think, maybe this is out of turn, but are you also looking at preventative measures, so maybe that the city sets aside a fund for spaying and neutering as a way to come at this from a different way in terms of reducing our costs on the other end?
The city, we're not, to take it in-house is just simply not feasible, and so that's not something that we will ever probably be in the business of, but any agency that we go with will certainly have a spade and neuter, neutering policy. What other agencies in Racine County intends to do is they'll have a vet in-house, and they'll either give vouchers when you adopt your animal to go get it spayed and neutered for a reduced fee and a vet in Racine County, or they'll do it for a reduced fee, and that also means if you've adopted an animal from your neighbor or however you've received your animal, that you could go there, and that's a revenue source for them. That's what Matic does in Milwaukee. You can, they do a little bit of fundraising or revenue raising through that. We've also met with Matic. It's a little bit different. That's in Milwaukee. They have a lot more municipalities. It's a larger scale, so there's more money, sort of, to, the economies of scales is a little bit different, because building a building with nineteen large municipalities is a lot easier than for Rock County, so the facility seems to be the biggest hurdle.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
Move approval of six H.
Motion by Evander Bogart, second by Noonan. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes six, zero. Item seven is ordinance, says there are none. Item eight, appointments. I, the undersigned, Kevin D. Levy, duly elected president of the Beloit City Council, subject to confirmation by the Beloit City Council, has hereby appointed the following citizen members to the vacancies in terms indicated below. Said appointment's being pursuant to nominations made and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at the regular meeting held December nineteenth, twenty-eleven. For the Board of Review, incumbent Howard Nash to a term ending December thirty-first, twenty-eleven. Community Development Authority, incumbent Tom Johnson, to a term ending December thirty-first, twenty-eleven. Equal Opportunities and Human Relations Commission, Alexis D. Saito, six fourteen Broad Street, number fourteen, to a term ending June thirtieth, twenty-thirteen. Municipal Golf Committee, incumbent Ida Lynch, to a term ending December thirty-first, twenty-fourteen. And Municipal Library Committee, Theron Sykes, seven seventeen Harrison Avenue, to a term ending June thirtieth, twenty-thirteen. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Noonan, is there a second? Second by Haynes. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, those appointments pass six, zero. Anyone wishing to serve on the city committee could call three six four sixty-six hundred, or go to the city's website at www.cib.bloit.wius, and you can go online and pick a committee and take it from there. Item nine, council activities and upcoming events. Councillor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to share a wonderful experience that I had at Holodazzle. I really appreciated the way that that event helped to create community cohesiveness. It was wonderful to see so many city residents there, walking around and enjoying being together and enjoying the shops and the crafts and artisans of downtown Beloit. I, it was fortunate that we had such beautiful weather. That never happens for Holodazzle, but I always say the same thing about the parade after Thanksgiving, so we're just really lucky, and I'm, I'm glad that we don't have a lot of snow, because that means less money spent on plowing, so keep it coming. But I do want to thank everyone who helped to make Holodazzle a great success, so I really enjoyed it and look forward to Art Walk in the spring. Thank you.
Councillor Haynes?
Ah, nothing to add.
Councillor Evander Bogart?
Yes, I had a chance to stop in at the celebration at Bagels &amp; More the other evening for their fifteenth year in business. I've had the opportunity to know Dave and his wife since they started with a contract to supply bagels to the college and then at Woodman's, and it's just wonderful to see how they're, they flourished and done a good job. The other thing, Mr. President, is a little bit more personal. I, I did have the opportunity to see Santa's list the other week, you know, the naughty and nice list, and I can't tell you how much you have to do, but you do have to up your game this next week. Otherwise, it's lump of coal time for you, so...
Want to pass that on? I also had the opportunity to attend Holodazzle. It was a wonderful event, and the, it was a little chilly, but that didn't dampen anyone's spirits, and I'm certainly also grateful for the lack of precipitation. Also, just wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays and a safe New Year, and enjoy the, enjoy the season, and maybe we'll end up with a white Christmas after all. We'll see.
Councillor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm impressed with the company that you keep, Councillor Evander Bogart. Very impressive. So, I just wanted to encourage anyone that has not yet taken out papers to run for the city council. There still is time to do that. We have several great, capable and competent candidates that have taken out papers and are circulating, and I'll be asking for your signatures, but it is healthy and helpful to the process to have a, a strong field of candidates, so that issues can come forward from citizens. It's your greatest opportunity to have a direct impact on the future of our great city. And I'd like to thank those that have taken out packets thus far, and I'd like to join my fellow councillors in wishing everyone a happy and safe holiday season and a great New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd love to also wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and all that good stuff. And Councillor Evander Bogart, just to show you that I'm going to be on my best this coming up week, so Santa can visit my house. I know all of you have been working hard during the budget process. We've had a lot of meetings. We had a long one tonight. That's why we were running a little late today. So, my Christmas gift to all of you is on January third, we will not have a city council meeting. Okay? So, that's my gift. We talked to staff, has done a wonderful job in presenting things throughout the year. I contemplated on this a long time, but my thanks to you for all the stuff that you've done, and all the good stuff that we've done. I'm looking to see if we need to get a motion for this.
You could, it's not required.
It's not required, but to show my gratitude to each one of you, I want to make sure that you understand that the January third meeting will be canceled due to all our business being accomplished for the year, so is that good enough for Santa to come see me, mister?
I have a consultant, that is...
Okay. We don't need a motion, but if you want one for the record, okay, so everyone understands, okay? Any questions on that? I don't think so. Okay, item ten, city manager's presentation. There is none. Item eleven, reports from boards and city officers. Eleven A, please.
A resolution affirming local support for a tax credit application by Celadon Holdings for rehabilitation of countryside village apartments.
Ms. Christensen, please.
Celadon Holdings has an accepted offer to purchase the property located at twenty-one oh one Freeman Parkway, which is known as Countryside Village Apartments, and has developed a plan to rehabilitate the site, the interior of the units, the exterior of the buildings, to construct a clubhouse and a tax garages by utilizing Section forty-two housing tax credits through WIDA. The application to WIDA requires local government to firm its support for the project, which is what that resolution, included in your packet, accomplishes. Included in this packet is a letter that came to the city manager and a scope of the work showing, and showing a preliminary site plan, some preliminary elevations. They've indicated that the proposed improvements total more than ten million dollars, and if the tax credit awarded, we would move through the process to go through the PUD process with the developers. They are here this evening, and they're going to run through this PowerPoint, and I will bring them down. And Larry, I don't remember which button is which on the remote. If you can, is it right?
Right.
Right is forward, I believe, so there's the...
During the week, just have, say their name and, same, their name and address for the record, please.
Oh, my name is Scott Henry. I'm with Celadon. I'm one of the principals. My address is two zero four seven Wilmette, Illinois. I'm not a Bears fan.
Right.
I'm joined, yeah, I'm joined by Dwayne Poehl. He's with ACC Management. Property management for our firm is extremely important. You can have the best property, best amenities, best location, and it all comes down to that, sometimes, that twenty-one-year-old property manager with not a lot of experience, and we've seen personally how those kinds of problems can snowball when you don't have the right team, and it can take years to correct those problems. I think if, you know, folks that are familiar with this property and the history are probably sadly familiar with the pitfalls of poor management, so we're excited about this project and excited to present our thoughts and our plans, and but at any rate, I think if you have any questions about property management, you know, again, we're a strong believer. We've got a, a good plan here. Dwayne is more than happy to step up and talk about some of his thoughts and how we'll effectively manage this property. But I also want to thank staff, this, getting, getting to this point on this agenda for this meeting. It was short fuse, and I, we appreciate staff's help to assist us in being able to get on this agenda, and we really required a lot of flexibility on their end, so it's important that we meet with you today and hopefully obtain your support, so that we can successfully complete our application and submit next month. So, thank you very much. This is the first, one of the first of many steps of a four-month process, so, you know, as, as what was mentioned before, it's critically important that we obtain a letter of support from, from the village or the city. But at any rate, let me, let me start here. Again, I'm with Celadon Holdings. We are... Ah, okay. A little bit about us. There's a couple photos or renderings of projects we're involved with. Celadon is composed of, of my... Celadon is composed of myself and my partner Thad Garver. We come with a lot of experience. We come from JP Morgan, which was, you know, one of the, or is one of the largest investors in tax credits in the country. We're a relatively new company. We started in 2008. We've got a growing portfolio, lots of experience. I'm a licensed architect. It was my job to oversee all of the bank's investments from a real estate standpoint. And then Thad, he's a CFA and he's the numbers expert. So, we're a relatively small company, but we come with a lot of experience. In order to complete a project like this, of this magnitude, in order to satisfy the industries and the lenders and investors, net worth and guarantee requirements, at this stage, we have to partner with another big company. So, we're working with Brin Shore on this development and another one not too far from here in Paddock Lake. And you can see just from their experience, they've been around a long time. They have a huge portfolio, lots of experience, lots of resources. So, while Celadon will be the lead developer and really, from a day-to-day standpoint, making the decisions and implementing the plan, Brin Shore will be, will hold a supportive role, you know, both from a human capital and a financial standpoint. So, we think this is a really, really good team. Brin Shore has a lot of experience in Wisconsin, thought of very highly with WIDA, and has worked closely with ACC in a number of their transactions. Just a little bit more about Brin Shore and all the different communities that they're, you know, they're involved with. Just a little bit about our project, we are renaming the property Prairie Family Residences. It is a gut rehab. I don't know if anybody has been by the property recently or in any of the buildings, but if you're a fan of zombie movies or if you watch The Walking Dead, it would be an outstanding set for, you know, one of those shows. It's, you know, sadly, it's, you know, we all know the history. So, it really requires a fairly robust level of renovation. We're expecting to spend in excess of $100,000 per unit. We're going to gut this thing down to the studs. In fact, a lot of the studs are going to have to go because of all the mold issues. We know there's a history. We know when you drive by there and you see those buildings, it probably conjures up memories of all the bad stuff that was going on over there. So, we really, ah, there you go. You can almost see somebody kind of stumbling out of the buildings and yelling, we're brains, right? So, we really want to change the look of this building. So, when you drive by this property, it'll look completely different. So, we're going to tear off the roofs. We're going to build new hip roofs at varying heights so it doesn't look so linear. We'll put on some gables over kind of the entries and other parts of the sod. You know, we'll put on, you know, hardy plank and we'll raise the masonry in certain places just to break up that linear nature that you see now. In terms of the site plan, we're really going to keep it kind of the way it is with exception. We'll enhance the landscaping. We'll provide some perimeter landscaping so there's a nice buffer between us and the residential area, single-family area next to us. We're planning on building garages along the property line, kind of near the main entry to, again, to provide kind of a nice buffer between us and the adjoining properties. We'll be building a, it's kind of hard to see from here, but there's, it looks kind of rectangular, kind of the middle, lower part of the sheet. We'll be building a new clubhouse, prominently located kind of in sight with the main entry and in center part, in the center part of the development. So, again, to help Duane's team more effectively manage this property, to have a good, solid visual presence on-site. You know, we're showing one tot lot there. We'll probably actually have a couple more than that. And, you know, we're going to try and make this project as green as possible. You know, if you've ever been there, you've seen how terrible that parking lot looks. We're going to put permeable pavers in there, better way to handle the storm water. Here's a couple elevations of the clubhouse. I went to IIT and so I'm a kind of a Messian, so forgive me if that's not your flavor of architecture, but it, you know, there's windows all the way around. So, again, it kind of promotes that, you know, well visibility. So, Duane's folks, when they're in the property management office, that they can see and what's going on at site. Here's a floor plan. You know, we're proposing to put a exercise facility in there. There'll be a little internet cafe. There'll be some, you know, kitchen cabinet area, places for people to do their homework and things like that. This, you know, this is some very, very high-level financials on our pro forma. You know, we're proposing to have a small component of market rate units, but, you know, we think based on the market priced very competitively, with a brand-new amenity package, it should be a very, very attractive place for folks to live. And again, just a little bit on our sources and uses, what we plan on spending. You know, the nice thing about the way we're structuring this transaction, the deal works very well with just credits and perm debt. We're not having to go after a whole laundry list of other sources of financing that can, if you're familiar with them, they can really complicate a project and they come with a lot of strings attached. And so, simpler is better and we're happy that we're able to do this transaction with a very simple capital stack. So, that's sort of the summary of the transaction. I'd love to either offer to have Duane come up and talk about his thoughts on property management or address any of your questions.
I think we have a couple of questions first. Counselor DeForest?
Thank you. What would be the number of units compared to the units that were there previously? Do you know?
Well, there's 112 now. There's two owners of, you know, two folks that bought condos. We would likely maintain the existing unit count and so, you know, we allow the two folks that are living there with units that they'd purchased to continue to live there. And then there'd be 110 units available for rent.
Okay. Did you make any effort to speak with neighboring residents for their input or feedback?
We did not have the opportunity to do that.
Okay. Would you plan to do that?
Absolutely.
And what would that look like?
We would invite them to kind of, what we've done before is we'll send out a mail alert to everybody and set up a time. There's, I guess, a hotel nearby that has some conference space that we would, you know, invite everybody to come to that location and just to have an open dialogue of what, you know, we know they've lived through some tough times with what was going on over there. So, just allow them to talk about what they experienced and what we can do as neighbors to help ensure that those things don't happen again and so forth.
So, I know you're pursuing the Section 42 tax credits. Will there be some mixed income or other income units available to then as part of that application?
Yes, yeah. If you look at our pro forma NOI sheet, there's a couple units, well, there's, it's a minority of the units, but there are units called quote-unquote "market rate." And so, anybody could lease those.
And then I honestly, I'm more concerned about the property management. You alluded to a property manager being on-site, which I'm glad to hear. I'm more interested in hearing more about the experience and history of the property management. It sounds like you're going to hire a separate company to be property manager, which is concerning to me. I want to hear more about their experience and history. Your building looks beautiful and I'm sure you've built lots of beautiful buildings, but I want to know about the property management company's experience and history. So, I'm hoping we'll get to hear that at some point. I especially want to know if they have property management experience in other urban communities, not just in suburbs.
Sure. Well, I mean, we, a couple of things, one of the first things I said tonight was property management is the key thing. You know, like I said, you could have the best property in the world and if you miss on property management, it can create problems and it'll take years to solve. So, we don't want to, we want to make sure that whoever is our property manager is experienced, not the 21-year-old, you know, right out of school. So, and Duane can talk a little bit more about that. But from our standpoint, though, if something gets messed up, even at the property level, if they, you know, if we're leasing to a bunch of bad apples or there's folks that are out of compliance, it really creates issues for us as developer and the investor. And there's a lot of folks, you know, we have third-party folks that come in and make sure all the paperwork's being done right and all the compliance is being done perfectly because it's not just us, it's the investor, it's the state. You know, there's a lot of folks coming, keeping an eye on, you know, on the good work that we're trying to do. And I think, you know, other than that, in terms of experience, you know, we, in order to be competitive with WIDA, we have to present a development team that has experience. That's one of the reasons why we're partnering with Brin Shore, because they've done a lot of transactions in Wisconsin. ACC has done a lot of work in Wisconsin successfully. So, and, you know, I'll let Duane talk a little bit more about that, but that's music to my ears. I share your concern. It's an important thing.
Can I ask one other question of you? Sorry. Forgive me because I'm not a real estate person, but how often do you, in terms of your own company's portfolios, take these properties and sell them to other development groups?
Well, we, you know, to get the full benefit of the tax credit, it's a minimum 15-year involvement. We're young guys. We're in it for the long haul. We build these properties. You can see from the drawings and the amount of money we're spending, that we're in this for the long haul. In addition to, you know, these are properties that we want to stay part of for a long, long, long time. In addition to that, though, we're obligated to comply with an extended use agreement. And, you know, typically, that's 30 years anyways, but we're not going anywhere soon. We'll be your neighbor a long, long time.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Vanda Bogart?
Thank you, Ms... Counselor DeForest, those were a number of questions I wanted to ask as well. As I recall the process, it's a competitive application process and you should know sometime in the early spring whether you're successful. Is that right?
Correct.
Have you been unsuccessful in the past and what makes you think this will be successful?
Well, we have, we're very familiar with what the state calls a Qualified Allocation Plan, QAP. And every couple of years, it changes, but the state has priorities on the types of housing that they like to see and they all, you know, every single line item comes with a score. And certainly that factors into the equation as to whether or not we'll pursue a particular transaction. Because if it doesn't score well, there's no chance we're going to get an allocation. So, this particular project, because it's foreclosed and because we're catering to mixed-income population, it's a rehab, you know, it's got a lot of bells and whistles that WIDA likes to see. It scores extremely well. We're, we think also the amount of resources we're asking for is fairly limited. And, you know, as everybody knows in this room, financing's very difficult to come by. And what is available is a very precious commodity. So, to the extent that we can show that we're being judicious of how we're using the sources that are available, I think that also makes our package more competitive.
How did you select this project? How'd you hear of it? How'd you come to be in Beloit, Wisconsin?
Well, we, we've been looking for, we think that there's, we've done a lot of these types of projects and we've, we have kind of a criteria of types of markets that we think are good markets. We're working with a very good, actually, he's here tonight, Harvey is our broker, and we gave him that kind of criteria, you know, market's got to be, you know, X amount of folks, diverse economy, you know, that type of thing. And he's done a great job in finding different opportunities. We're also big believers in repositioning foreclosed assets. We're doing a lot of NSP work. So, it kind of fit the high marks of this deal, the high marks of the kind of things that we try and do.
Can you speak to your relationship with, I think you said it was Brin Shore? Who's in charge? If you decide to do it one way and they decide to do it a different way, who's in charge?
It's a 50-50 partnership. We have a JV with them. It's a, it's a good relationship. We have other transactions with them. And, you know, in any marriage, you always want to go, well, from a business standpoint, I like to use the analogy, you know, partnership is like a marriage and you got to also unfortunately plan for the trouble that, you know, couples can have. So, we have a whole dispute resolution process worked out. But, you know, that's the worst-case scenario. We work very well together. We're all solid, sharp real estate professionals and sure, we have differences of opinion from time to time, but, you know, we work it out.
And you have to hold it for 15 years and then you can get out of it if you need to, want to?
Well, in this day and age, to compete better and get more points, you usually have to agree to sign on with an extended use agreement.
Well, that's obviously, at least my concern, I don't want to speak for my fellow counselors, but I'm sure it's some of their concern too. We approve the front-end thing, it looks great for a couple of years and then gets flipped and, oh gee, well, and then you walk away and it's a dump in 10 years. And we're left with right back where we started. You and your investors get tax credits and we're left with a less-than-pristine situation. That's, so 30-year commitment is different than a 15 or whatever.
Oh, yeah, well.
Okay. Well, that, thank you.
Okay. Any other? Counselor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you very much for your interest in investing in Beloit. It's a great community and I hope that you have a great experience with that and it's very rewarding and you'll consider investing here again. So, several of my questions were also raised earlier and I thank the counselors for that. One that I did want to ask, though, is when you do hopefully win approval, will you be, what will be your criteria for selecting contractors? And more specifically, will you make an effort to try to hire locally?
Yeah, and, you know, it's funny, I had a meeting with an alderman in another city about this very issue and he expressed, I told him what I'm about to tell you, and he expressed frustration with other developers that have come in and said, hey, you know, we're going to hire all local folks. And then, you know, the result was something different and they're very disappointed. I'm going to tell you what I'm going to tell you, but I would definitely encourage you and I'm happy to provide references on our record in that regard. You know, we think it's very important to work with local folks, you know, for all the very obvious reasons. But, you know, the local electrician knows how to work with the city and what the city's hot points are in certain key areas. We just think it's good, it's good business, it's good for the local economy. I think it makes for the most efficient construction process possible. So, you know, we'll meet or exceed, you know, the typical MBE, WBE requirements and the Section 3 requirements. We're all, we're very, very versed with how that works and, you know, it's not about just doing the minimum. It's doing, making the right hiring decisions, but really trying to support the local subcontractor base.
Great. And thank you. And then lastly, I've had a chance to visit Willmet several times. It's a beautiful community. And as you travel through Beloit, you'll see that Beloit has been going through a great renaissance and I'm very pleased that you are adding additional landscaping in there. It makes such a great difference, not only for the quality of your product and for your residents to be pleased and how well it'll take care of the property, but for future development for the entire city. So, thank you.
I agree. You know, you can, landscape, it's one of those things. Who was it? Of course, I'm not, now that I'm on the spot, I'm not going to remember his name. But there was a landscape architect that said that architecture's great, but as soon as you're done with it, it starts to die. And it's really what the landscaping brings to the equation, to allow the architecture to continue to stay alive and grow. We're a big believer in that. Celadon is, you know, it's a color green. So, other than being a name that sounds really cool, it is supposed to symbolize our commitment to green construction and, you know, landscaping and things like that.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Counselor DeForest?
Yeah, I would like to say I do appreciate your commitment to green construction. I saw some of the specific items that you had listed. I mean, to have a developer come in and tell us they're going to put... I mean, to have a developer come in and tell us they're going to put rain barrels, I've never heard that before. So it's wonderful. Given that, though, I do have concerns still. First of all, would it be possible, can we, and maybe this is a question for staff, can we include as a condition of our support that the, the developers dedicate a percentage towards local labor? That they're going to say, we will commit to a certain percentage of our construction, staff, crew, contractors will be local labor? Is that possible? Is that doable? Is that specific in-contract kind of condition that we're conditional on our support? And then also, I'm wondering about how time-sensitive this is. I know we're looking at tax credits, this is very time-sensitive. I'm guessing, is there any possibility of laying this over? I, I guess one thing I'd just share with you frankly, I'm disappointed you did not talk to residents, especially because you've shared that you know about the history of this property. There's a longstanding political issue, social issues for this neighborhood with this property. And I guess I'm disappointed that demonstrates to me maybe an insensitivity about how important that is to the neighborhood. I'm uncomfortable giving my support when I don't know how they feel about it, and you haven't done that work for me in talking to them and allaying their concerns. That makes it difficult for me to give you support. I don't know if that makes sense. But that's what I'm looking for. You know, I don't, I don't have any residents here to ask them, what do you think about this? So I just want to share with you, that's a huge reservation for me.
And I, I guess I say with everything that went on out there, I think that if anyone had gone out there to look around or consider anything, I'm pretty sure the residents, I understand your point, that a meeting was not developed, but I think the residents are well-aware of something getting ready to go on out here, and anything is better than what we had out here before. Looking at the plans here, and then he stated that he's going to meet with the residents, and I think that moving forward, I think if we go ahead and approve this, at least the way I see it, then he meets with the residents and lets them know, hey, this is what we're considering. I don't think, looking at the plans, that no one would have a problem with this, because it is going to better the environment and make it better than what it was before. I understand what you're saying, but I, I guess I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity here, and I think presenting it to the residents in that, in that form, and saying, we got an exciting project here. I guess I'm excited about the fact that we're going to have an onsite manager there, and I'm going to bring him up here in a minute to kind of hear from him for a little while. I'm excited about that in itself. And I think with all of the positives that this project has, I think the residents out there would just be more supportive and understanding. I, I get it, that, you know, yeah, maybe we should have met before then. But I think, considering the history out there, I think the residents out there are saying, we need to do something, and we don't need it to be where it was before. And I think this is, this is miles above what we had before. So, Counselor Nuneal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just add to your comments that tonight, I believe, we're, we're voting on this letter of support, and that when, hopefully, they do get final approval, we will have another opportunity to visit again. And hopefully, by that point, you'll, you'll, now you've heard our concern, and I share their concern, and hopefully, we'll have more than one meeting at different times.
And so maybe between, and so maybe between now and then, so once you get the letter of support, then you can say, we did receive this letter of support from the city, here's what we're planning on doing. So between now and that time, I think that'd be, I think that'd be something that, I think he hears it clearly that this is something that we're very adamant about. So, the property manager, can we take a couple of minutes? I think Counselor DeForest had a, one about his experience.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dwayne Paul with ACC Management Group. I, I think I can address some of your, some of your issues. Let me give you a little history. Unfortunately, we didn't get some slides into the PowerPoint on our company. ACC Management Group has been around since 1975. The original owner of ACC Management Group's name was Fred Loeb. He actually developed some of, I believe it was the second tax credit property in the state of Wisconsin. So he started from the very beginning in the tax credit industry. Our forte is tax credit compliance. 90% of our properties are tax credit, have, have a tax credit component in it. My boss, Rose Andler, bought, Affiliated Capital Corporation was the original company. It had a construction division and the management division. In 2002, Fred Loeb was diagnosed with cancer, and my boss bought the management entity in 2003. So we've been around since 2003 in our, in our form right now. She was the director of property management for five years prior to her buying the company. So we manage 42 properties, I believe, in Wisconsin, Illinois, and one property in Iowa. Again, the majority of our properties are tax credit-based. We have Section 8 properties that are wrapped with tax credits. We have rural development properties that are wrapped with tax credits. We have strict tax credit properties. We do so-market rate properties. In answer to, somebody was, I believe it was you, that was indicating the long-term and what you're left with, history will show you that tax credit allows you to build better properties than market rate properties. So what, even if somewhere a long ways down the road, and again, these gentlemen are in it for the long haul, typically, the properties that get sold when they come out of the tax credit program are in better shape than the property, than market rate properties when they get sold. One of the things that ensures that is WIDA does amazing compliance and inspections. So annually, you get inspected by WIDA. You know, you're required to maintain the quality of the apartments. So that, that answers that question. It, it stays in there a lot. You can drive along to a lot of cities and look at some of these properties, and they're tax credit properties, and you don't know it. You look at them, and you say, wow, that's, you know, that's amazing. In answer to your question about whether we manage properties in urban properties, we have 12 properties in Center City, Milwaukee. Most of them are at rehabs. They were purchased as a Section 8 property, we put tax credits on them. The quality of those neighborhoods increases substantially because of that. Because it, as an example, Park Hill was a cinder block building. It looked like prison. And we resurfaced with EFIS the entire outside. I mean, we made it, it quite honestly is the nicest, you know, the nicest property in that neighborhood right now. So, you know, our experience is, is very vast. We have a very, very strict criteria on who we rent to. We do criminal background checks, we do credit checks, we do landlord verifications, and we don't vary from that. We want quality people in quality, affordable housing. And so our, my tolerance for drug use, my tolerance for criminal activity is virtually none. And because of our, because of our background checking, I can't guarantee that I don't have any of that, but I have very limited. Our properties run very, 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 very smoothly. If there's something else I can answer for you, I'd be happy to. I don't know if I addressed everything that were your concerns.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Your property managers on site, how, how many of them, percentage-wise, actually live in the complex or in the units themselves? How many of them live on site?
My property managers?
Yes.
In all honesty, very few. I, I have a couple. Typically, it doesn't happen a whole lot. And one of the things that happens when you, when you live on-site is you burn out managers very, very rapidly. You get this on your door at 1:00 in the morning every night. All of my managers live within a very, very close proximity to the properties. I have 24-hour manage, emergency maintenance, so emergencies are answered immediately by my maintenance staff. So I have a couple that live on-site, but it's, it's pretty rare.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 11A.
Motion, Mr. President.
Like a motion.
I'd move approval of 11A.
Motion by Counselor Vanda Bogart. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Nuneal. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 6-0. 11B, please.
Resolution approving a cooperative agreement with the city of Janesville for commercial plumbing inspection services.
City manager.
Thank you, Mr. President and counselors. The agreement before you this evening is another offshoot of our cooperative committee that was established following a joint meeting of the Beloit and Janesville city councils. This particular agreement would provide commercial plumbing inspection services to the city of Janesville, at least for an interim period. As you noted in reading the materials, their commercial plumbing inspector has just retired. They have no one else on staff that can provide that service. They approached the city, wanted to know if we can do it. We do have a person available through the winter months, for sure. There will be time to do this. You also saw in the contract that they are fully reimbursing the city for our cost for salary and benefits, plus they're covering the mileage expense for the employee to go back and forth. And of course, our employees use their own vehicles for their business activities in any event, so all that money would be fully reimbursed. At the present time, we are entering into this, as you saw, it's a three-month agreement with extenders in it. I believe Janesville's plan is to ultimately fill that position, possibly not before the spring construction season gets underway. So the agreement may just run for a few months, but once again, it's another good example of the cooperative activities that are ongoing between the two communities as we continue to collaborate and work closely together. If counselors have any questions about any particular item in the agreement, I'll be happy to answer that. Otherwise, it's ready for council action.
Okay, is there a motion for approval?
Motion by Nuneal.
Motion by Nuneal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Haynes. Counselor comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 6-0. Item 11C, please.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the design of the Fourth Street Bridge over Lenigan Creek.
Mr. Flash.
Thank you. Before you tonight is a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the design and future construction of the Fourth Street Bridge over Lenigan Creek. It will provide for the replacement of the existing box culvert. This agreement is needed to move forward to access the Department of Transportation funding. The DOT will be the lead for this project for the design. The existing box culvert will be removed and replaced, hopefully with a new bridge instead of a multiple-barrel box. They have allotted $150,000 for the design phase. $120,000 of that will be DOT funding. The $30,000 that is the local funding will be, and is included in the 2012 CIP. Once the design is complete and construction costs are determined, this will be amended to include construction costs at 80/22. I mean, it's 80%, 20% funding also.
Okay. There a motion for approval? Motion by Spritzer. Is there a second? Second by Haynes. Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Yes, Mr. Flash, can you give me a quick primer on what seems to be kind of a disconnect in my mind? Why does it cost so much, $150,000, to design a really tiny little bridge over a really tiny little creek?
It seems like a really tiny little bridge. It's actually of over 60 feet in length. There's four barrels in that box culvert. So its total length is about 60 feet. By the time we put the appropriate amenities on it for the bike and pedestrian pathways on the, that'd be east side. Yeah, towards the river. That'd be the east side, towards the river. Get me a little confused there, sir. It starts to add up. They, I questioned it. We've had this actually, available for your, your action for a number of months. I was trying to get out of the DOT why they were allotting so much money for that. I, my design estimate costs are much less than this. They will be actually what the costs are for design. They wanted to make sure they had enough money for the amenities we wanted to have put into it when we did our design phase.
Well, again, I respect your, your profession, but with computer-assisted design and with multiple access to all these different bridges that are, and this isn't unique, this isn't new, it's a little, so it's 60 feet long. It takes a half an afternoon to, you know.
Well, that's a little oversimplification.
I understand, but $150,000 for a 60-foot concrete thing.
We agree. Again, this is not going to, that was some of our concerns, and I brought them up to the DOT also. What I've asked them to do, and, and they didn't want to change it, they wanted to assure that we had adequate funding. I think it's more than adequate funding, and the actual cost will most probably be less than this, quite a bit less than this, when we get done with our solicitation for professional services through the DOT. So if we need only $50,000 to do the design work, they'll still support us 80/20. And they've assured me that any additional funds that were left over from this will be rolled to the construction side.
Okay.
I was trying to fight, fight the DOT on this one to make it more realistic, and I lost, too.
Counselor DeForest.
There is no incentive for state restraint here in their design, which is my concern. We're going to pay 20% of their design costs regardless of what kind of a bill they run up.
Oh, no, no. That's not true.
I'm going to go through this. I can't, I can't, I can't justifiably say that we're willing to commit the kind of money to design. I'm flabbergasted, as well as my colleague, and I can't see how I could vote for a design project costing $150,000 of this scope and scale and say that we're going to cover 20% of it, no matter what it is.
Oh, no, we're capped.
Hopefully it comes down.
We're capped at the $150,000 of the local funding.
And for me, and I'm not mad at you, it's not, I am just the messenger, but this cap is unacceptable.
I understand.
In my mind, and so if we tell the DOT no, I guess I'm going to have to.
Well, you don't want to give, you don't want to give away the funding.
Well, if we tell them no, will they come down? A little more.
No, I, I've.
Hold on, hold on. Let me explain it again. We're missing the point. This is a grant application for funding. This is not an engineering contract.
No, yes.
Once we get the funding approved, then the engineering department will do a request for proposal, and they will solicit proposals from a number of professional engineering firms, and we will get a final actual cost number for the project. As Mike has indicated, we think this number's too high also. And if we do get that number, or get a lower number, you know, we're only going to pay this 20%. According to this, we're actually capped at $30,000 of local cost.
Right.
Is what we're capped at, okay? The rest of this is all state funding through that bridge design and construction program. So the city is not at risk here for certainly any unlimited amount of money, or even a large amount of money. But we need to get the grant approved. Hopefully, the design costs will be less. If they are, whatever's left in the grant will roll over into the construction portion, and hopefully, we'll get to construction sooner.
That's the intent.
Counselor Spritzer.
Understanding that we're not committing ourselves to anything more than the 30,000, what, who, who is controlling the process from here forward that will determine what the dollar amount ends up being? Is that still through your office, or are we handing it off to the state, and they will be deciding who does the design work?
We do it collaboratively.
DOT will be the lead agency.
They will be the lead agency. Otherwise, it'll become a reimbursement. We'd have to come up with the total funds ourselves and then petition for reimbursement. It's much more cost advantageous for the city to let them be the lead and let them send us the bill.
And is this, is this the, the first, last, only vote we're taking related to the design phase of this?
Oh, no, this is just.
Or they'll come back to us with the exact number?
You will not be able to award or not award the design contract. That will be done by the DOT. But we will be bringing you back the results of the design and be involved in the design phase. We'll be giving you a workshop or something similar to what we did with the Henry Avenue structure to keep you updated as to how things are progressing and the design issues.
So, so we will, we will be a part of the design input, but as far as whatever the contract ends up being for the design work, if it ends up being the full $150,000, what we vote tonight commits to that.
Right. But given, knowing the scope of this project.
It won't.
It won't be $150,000. And that's what I tried to bring forward to them, and that's why there was a delay in bringing this to you, because I wanted to bring you realistic numbers.
What do you think the realistic number is?
Maybe 75 tops. I could be wrong, but that's my, my guess. My educated guess.
But the city's cost is only.
80% of that, if that was it.
The city's cost is only 20%.
Right.
And it's capped at $30,000. Okay, so we're not asking for any huge commitment of municipal funds to move the project forward.
Counselor Nuneal.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The number is shocking, and thank you for trying to work with them to save them money as well. When was that bridge last constructed?
In the 50s, if I recall correctly.
It says 1940.
Is it 1940?
Okay.
There it goes, yep.
It has been crumbling for a number of years and is in great need of repair.
It meets the criteria, and it's to our advantage to take the funding at 80/20 for the bridge program to move this forward. For us to have to fund the whole thing is pretty substantial, and we would have a great difficulty to do that, so...
My only additional input is that, you know, obviously, the Henry Avenue Bridge is going to be wonderful, but it is, as we know and you hear as much as anybody, these construction projects, while they're underway, are...
They're painful.
Very painful to the residents and different people in that area and to the businesses. And I would just like, and I know that you do, since we've talked about it before, but that we try to remember all of that as opposed to when we're setting up the timing for these different construction projects. So if they're back-to-back years, you know, that really could, you know...
It won't be back-to-back.
Okay.
It's going to take at least a year to two years for design.
Okay.
And the funding is requirement for expenditures by 2017.
Okay.
So it'll be prior to then, but it won't be next year.
Okay, good. I'm very glad to hear that, but I'm glad that we're getting it.
And it won't be... And it probably won't be 2014 either. It'll be more like 15, it'd be my guess.
Counselor Haynes.
Actually, all of the things I was going to say have already been addressed.
There is a motion, and a second, if I correctly remember, to approve item 11C. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes five to one. Item 11D, please.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund master contingency fund.
Mr. York, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Each year about this time, we normally bring a request to the council to transfer funds from the general fund contingency account that we place in the budget each year. As you recall, that is a funding source that we place in the budget each year to cover unexpected or unanticipated costs that come up throughout the course of the budget year. And this year, we had three departments that incurred some expenditures that were unanticipated, and we're asking for the council's concurrence to transfer a little bit over $188,000 from the $225,000 contingency account to cover some unexpected expenses. And the city manager's department, for the All-America City Award Program that we had earlier this year, we had about $14,400 in costs associated with that participation in that program that wasn't budgeted in the 2011 budget. We've got... The fire department had some unexpected need for some outside legal services during the course of the year with some agreements, arbitrations, hearings that they had for $22,400. And there was some unexpected overtime also in the fire department that's run the overtime budget over, and we're asking for $80,000 to cover that. And we all... So finally, we had, in our code enforcement department, quite a number of unexpected costs associated with the property maintenance program, the foreclosed and vacant properties that we have throughout the city that we have to maintain each year. We're asking for $72,000 to be transferred to cover some of those costs. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, is there a motion to approve item 11D?
For discussion purposes, can we get a motion just to discuss it? A motion by Haynes, second by DeForest. Counselor DeForest, you guys are making this rough for me today.
I guess you can see we're not happy about this. I'm not happy about this.
I realize you're not, but we've got to get it on the floor to talk about it if we're not happy about it, so...
I did send a request asking for more clarification about what's entailed in the professional services that are over. Paul, are you familiar with them, or should we call in Julie and Brad to talk about what some of those specific professional services expenses are?
I have some familiarity with it. I don't know what type of specific questions you may have.
Well, I mean, we're spending...
I think I tried to explain in the staff report as best I could...
We receive a little bit of information.
...the reason behind these requests.
Okay, so for example, we're spending $100,000 on maintaining foreclosed properties, mowing them and helping them.
Yes.
That, to me, is really hard to swallow. That's a lot of money.
Well, the alternative is not to maintain the properties. I guess we can do that, so...
Why is it costing us so much? Who are we hiring to do this? Are these full-time city workers doing it?
No, these are outside contractors that are hired by the code enforcement department to maintain these properties. We don't have the staff resources, the city doesn't, to maintain these properties ourself. So we hire outside contractors to do the work.
I guess I would like to request at some future meeting that we receive a report or some more information about that particular, you know, outside contract. I mean, we don't... We're not privy to that micromanaged detail, but that's a lot of money, and especially if you're going to have to continue to come back to us to make amendments because we're spending more in this area than we budgeted, that's a lot of money. I would really like to get more detail about that, see if there's some way we can make that a little more financially feasible or to reduce some of that cost. In terms of the professional services for the fire department, so what you're saying is the arbitration issue that we weren't...
The fire department retained our outside legal counsel to assist them during the course of year with a number of personnel-related issues, and these are payments made to outside legal counsel.
A lot of legal counsel, and this is outside...
It's very expensive to hire outside counsel to represent you.
I guess I could ask from a preventative standpoint, and what are we doing to prevent these kind of legal arbitration issues from arising that we have to continue to hire outside legal counsel to? So what are we doing wrong that we're continuing to have these kind of grievances come forward?
I have no idea. I don't know what the specifics were behind the grievances.
Mr. President, we're not doing anything wrong. Now, this is part of the normal collective bargaining relationship. This is part of the hidden cost of collective bargaining, and all organizations that have labor unions have arbitrations. In the public sector, we have both interest arbitrations, and these are what are called grievance arbitrations that are filed against the city for any number of issues. We always have several of these pending at any point in time, divided up between the various collective bargaining units, and they're in process. Some of the work is done in-house, a lot of it is not. There's two in-house councils that handle the municipal court, all the city's legal work. There's no possible way that two people could handle all of this, although some of this gets very technical into various aspects of either the past or current collective bargaining laws and how those are applied, and we use the expertise of our labor relations attorneys for that purpose. And I just want to add, and I appreciate that there's consternation here, no one likes to ever spend more than is in a budget account, and I do want to put this into perspective. We have a $30 million general fund we maintain, and this year, I think it was about a $250,000 general contingency account, a reserve account, specifically to cover these kinds of expenses. The request for transfer tonight for $188,000 is slightly more than one-half of 1% of the general fund budget, and it's for very specific reasons. You all are aware of the All-America City Award Program, the legal fees related to grievances. We had additional overtime in the fire department, mostly related to family and medical leave issues, which involved a number of employees over the course of the year that caused additional overtime, and of course, the maintenance of these properties, most of which are in our residential neighborhoods. Some are vacant lots, many are properties in some state of foreclosure, many are abandoned properties, and there are some offsetting revenues for that. That's not all net out of pocket, and we do get some of that money back. In fact, I think you rolled about $36,000 over onto the property tax bill here this past week of charges for services on properties. Obviously, a lot of these properties are, for all practical purposes, abandoned. They're usually in some stage of the three-year property tax foreclosure process if the banks or the financial institutions aren't working on them, and so obviously, we don't get all of this back. But this is a key element of maintaining our residential neighborhoods, and those of you who have seen abandoned properties with the weeds three foot high and the windows knocked out and the doors standing open can have some quick appreciation of what this would look like in our residential neighborhoods if the city wasn't constantly stepping up to maintain those properties. So that's what that money goes for.
I have more questions, if that's okay. I guess my one follow-up question would be, if it's typical and ordinary to have several grievances throughout the year, why do we originally budget nothing in that category?
Normally, we do not charge all the legal fees for those grievances out to the line departments, but we had other legal fees, other grievances and other charges that went to both the legal department of budget for additional legal services, and we also have some funding in the human relations department for grievance services. So we needed to do a transfer in order to cover services for those two grievances. And again, I want to reiterate, these are transfers, not supplemental appropriations. So there was plenty of money into the general fund to cover these costs, but we needed to get it into the right budget accounts, and that's why we do the routine year-end transfer for this purpose.
Okay, and then I have another question about the overtime over expense in the fire department. Can we expect for next year that we're going to be spending even more on overtime when we're running on a decreased minimum staffing? I can't help but notice that it looks like $80,000 in overtime, that's the cost of a firefighter. I understand there's large fires where we need all hands on deck, and so you can't predict those, and we're going to have those expenses, but I guess I'm just asking, are we going to see an even greater increase in overtime since we're running with, you know, decreased minimum staffing?
There's no way to predict that. Most of this overtime is associated with, as Ms. Arft indicated, medical leave. There were some, a number of workers' comp-related injuries in the fire department this year. That's what the bulk of this overtime is for.
This generally is not for holdover of companies, although that can happen if there's a call right at shift change early in the morning, but most of this money is for minimum manning, holding over employees. It's hard to know from year to year. We are, as you know, adjusting our minimum manning to the new lower manpower level, so the ratio or relationship to minimum manning to our total available staffing will be about the same as it's been in the past. So that, the new budget doesn't automatically drive more overtime. The big variable here are leaves. Some of these are workers' comp leaves, a lot of them are family and medical leaves, and those are for extended periods of time for the most part, and those are the items that drive the overtime budget, because we've got to cover, we have people absent, either they're sick or they've got a family emergency or they're recovering from an injury. We have to be able to cover those hours to maintain minimum manning, and it's hard to predict what that's going to be in a given year.
Anything else, Counselor DeForest?
I guess if I could just make one comment, maybe this is too idealistic pie in the sky, but wouldn't it be nice if we could somehow find a local organization that could employ our area youth to do some of that maintenance of these foreclosed properties instead of necessarily contracting out for big bucks? I don't know who those contracts are going to, but I just... That's a lot of money. Thanks, sorry.
They all go to local contractors.
Okay.
All this money rotates through the belay economy. The answer to your suggestion, for the most part, would be no. In order to use the kind of equipment and meet the federal safety standards, the young people would have to be 18 or over in order to run the moors and all the other lawn equipment that's used for much of this work. Some of this is light building maintenance, securing open doors, that kind of thing, and that would be difficult for children to do. They would have to be older people for safety reasons in order to be able to do that with a volunteer group.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to say something? This is a bid. We did a bid, open bid, and we bid out these services. It is five seasons maintenance. They do a fantastic job. They're doing way better than the last contractors. There's a lot of foreclosed properties out there, and if we don't mow them, if we don't maintain them, the neighborhoods go down. So I mean, it's a balancing act, but we do... We did put a bid out. We took the lowest bid, and it's five seasons, and they are local. They live in this community, they work in this community, so...
Counselor Spritzer.
Thank you. Is this, this being my first vote on this type of thing, since it's my first year on the council, is this typical for the amount of the contingency budget that we end up using at the end of the year, or is this high?
It just, it varies from year to year, and again, we put money in the budget every year to cover unexpected costs that come up throughout the year. When we compile the budget, I mean, there are going to be things that come up during the course of year that we didn't anticipate, and that's what this contingency account is used for, to cover those costs. You know, whether it's snow removal or overtime in one of the departments or whatever other type of unexpected event, you know, should occur throughout the year.
Sure.
I think I remember one year when we didn't touch it at all. The whole thing rolled back into fund balance on December 31st. I think only one year, and the amounts have been all over the place. There have been some years when it was like $30,000, $40,000. Couple of years, we used it all up, the whole quarter of a million. It just depends on what happens during the year, what kind of storm events, things like this that come up during the course of the year that we have to cover.
And then a follow-up to that, as far as what we can and can't anticipate, did any of these, I guess, additional expenses particularly related to the properties in code enforcement, did that impact the recommendations for the 2012 budget that we approved recently? Are we budgeting any more for that because of what we realized we had to spend this year, and if not, why not?
I don't think we adjusted the budget enough for 2012. By the time we saw what was happening here in the fall, we started looking into it, and there are two issues at play here. One was an accounting change where they stopped letting us... The auditors did not want us to post the revenues that we get in as a refund of expense. So in past years, I think prior to '10, a lot of that revenue or a lot of this expense was offset by incoming revenues. Beginning, I think it was 2010, Paul...
I think it was several years ago. I don't think it was last year.
Prior to that?
Yeah.
But with that accounting rule change, which affected this, and then this amount was quite a bit bigger this year than what we spent last year.
Well, I think as Julie indicated, the reason for that are the number of properties that are out there.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of properties out there, we need a lot of maintenance.
You know, they're increasing, they're not decreasing. The number of vacant foreclosed properties are actually increasing.
So that's my question exactly, then, is if we at least are assuming we're going to have this increased level and potentially increasing even higher, why isn't that making its way into our budget anticipations in some way?
I'm not sure what was budgeted for 2012.
Essentially, in June, when we were doing this, we entered the budgets in June.
Sure.
We didn't have a good sense of how much was coming in. Five Seasons is a small company. They were actually behind by several months on billing us. So we didn't have a really good sense of how high this was this year until later in the year, and then what do I do when you're wanting to make cuts? Say, oh, by the way, could we add money? I mean, we just at that point kind of, you know, let it go, and this is, you know, the foreclosures are increasing, but I don't know that we want to budget up to 95 every year, because then what if we have a lower year and then we've got money budgeted we don't need? And there is a contingency fund set aside for that particular thing. We don't want to budget for the worst snow, the worst everything, because then you're going to be taxing people for services you don't need to provide.
I think that's a good point. I mean, that's exactly why we have a contingency account.
Sure, I just want to make sure we're not budgeting for the best-case scenario either when we have certain trends to work with, so I guess...
Budgeting is not an exact science, believe me. I've been doing this for a number of years. It is not an exact science.
Yeah, we did not have good numbers in June. The mowing season had not even started. This number did not get adjusted. By the time we realized what was happening here, we were into the final budget approval cycle. So that's one of the things we're going to have to adjust with the next budget cycle. It probably, probably won't be to 97. It probably should be at least $60,000 to $70,000 on a recurring basis that we should have in the account, so we will watch for that next year.
That answers my question.
Okay. Counselor Haynes.
Okay, actually, one comment. I have one resident over on Elm Street that calls me periodically about the three foreclosed properties on his block, and he's very thankful that we do this, very thankful. Two, is this a net... Is the $97,000 a net amount, or is that the gross amount?
It's a gross.
Gross, so we have some offsetting revenues that are not displayed here.
Correct.
Okay, and we're making some attempt to get as much of that as possible from the, you know, from these property owners.
you know, from these property owners, whether that's the bank or the owner.
We send bills out, and if they're not paid, we... Those are added to the tax bill that goes out at the end of the year.
Okay, good. So we have some money that is coming in that's offsetting this, and we do know that it's positive for the neighborhood, whether it's desirable to be able to spend this or not, it's necessary. I'll leave that as it may.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, there's been a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes six to zero. And before we adjourn, as we do...
[inaudible]
Is there a second? Second by Spright. For all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.